Commissioners' Regular Meeting, Tuesday, September 24th at 11:00 a.m., Golden Court Community Room. We have an amended agenda. It was amended on Friday morning, I believe 9:25 or something like that in the morning. So it's well within open meeting law. Number one topic is not reasonably anticipated topics 48 hours in advance. We do have an addition, and that is we just received our annual operating budget yesterday, the 23rd. So we'll need to add that to the agenda for under Executive Director Report, and it will be item H. So the next topic is approval of...
Go ahead.
Me? I also just noticed too that within that packet with the budget is the engagement letter or the contract with Gary De Pace. Could we please add that as well?
Yes, so I will add that. HI, we'll make that I, engagement letter.
I wanted to speak as far as the not reasonably anticipated.
There... Did you...
You went on without seeing if anybody had anything to say.
Usually you'd notify the chair ahead of the meeting, but go ahead.
Well, I just was curious because of the fact that we're...Hadley Housing is run by Amherst Housing, a management agreement. The second-in-command now is now longer here, and I feel that it's sort of disrespectful that I myself, I don't know if you told the other people, that the person who was the director is no longer working. Because if we have a management agreement, I think that we should be, you know, apprised that somebody has...
And I just...So first of all, that happened since the last meeting, so this is the first opportunity. And secondly, your characterization of it being the second-in-command is not accurate.
Well, director and your executive director, and we have a management agreement with you. So that's what I'm saying is...
I'm gonna call a stop to this. I'm gonna ask you to sue, allow Pamela to respond.
I am. I didn't say anything.
Please, without interrupting. Pamela?
Right, so it's, it is the day-to-day operations. She did, she retired. There's nothing clandestine or we're not withholding information. It happened since the last board meeting. She retired, so...
But I feel personally as a board member that would have been respectful to the board to let us know.
Ma'am, the boards, the minute, the board started five minutes ago.
Can I say something? I think Sue, as Pam, Pamela stated, we just started. So if you did have that concern, I would have waited for the whole meeting just to see if it would have been announced and see if that information would have been included, included, and then you can bring it up. But as far as bringing it up now and not giving Pamela a chance to actually mention it is a little before the horse.
But I feel that I know how the board operates, and if it's not on the agenda, I would have been told.
Right, but something else wasn't on the agenda as well.
Can I ask when you found out that she left? Maybe a week or so ago. Then why didn't you add it to the agenda?
Why didn't you ask me to add it to the agenda?
Of course, I figured that maybe, I gave you the benefit of the doubt that maybe you would let the board know.
So I'm gonna put it into this and explain to you a couple of things. If you come upon some information that you would like to see added to the agenda, you can email or text me. And secondly, as Pamela has explained, it's day-to-day operations. As Board of Commissioners, we have no right to any information about anybody on Pamela's staff because it's, just Pamela. It's a violation of the privacy of employees of Amherst Housing Authority for you or any of us to have any personal information. If an employee wants you to know something, that employee will tell you.
And can I speak? The last thing I'm gonna say, I disagree because of the fact, or reiterate it again, we're being managed by Amherst Housing, and Mary's been here for many years. I felt that we should be informed. You don't have to tell us why she left or what the reason was, but just the fact that she's no longer here. I think it was just disrespectful for...
So I take umbrage with you calling me disrespectful. And again, I'm just gonna tell you, I am contractually obligated to my staff and to you folks. I am not contractually obligated to update you with the day-to-day operations of the staffing. That is, that's under my prerogative, so I disagree. So we'll disagree to, we'll agree to disagree.
But the laws on Pamela's side, there's nothing in the law, rules or regs to support your assertion. Nothing. In fact, it's contraindicated. Okay?
I disagree, but I'll let you have your piece and say your word.
Right. Topic's not reasonably anticipated. Again, to reiterate, we'll discuss the annual operating budget received yesterday from our fee accountant. It will be item H. We'll have the engagement letter from Gary De Pace, which is, do we need to vote on that as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll sign that engagement letter. It will be a contract, correct?
I...
You sign it. Great.
You authorize me to sign it.
We authorize you to sign it. Wonderful. Okay. So the next item will be the approval of the minutes of August 27, 2024. That's a votable item. Can I get a motion? Crystal, motions. Can I get a second?
I'll give it a second.
Rich, seconds. Discussion. Sue?
No discussion.
Crystal?
No discussion.
I have only a one word, and I'll get with Pamela after. Call for the vote. I have to hear something, so Sue?
Yes. I hope, yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's four to zero. The next is the Executive Director's Report. Pamela, would you like to give that in its all its entirety, or do you wanna have various board members?
Um, it's really up to you folks, but I mean, you're, you're just getting the packet, so it may, you may be behind the eight ball.
Well, there's no way we can do annual operating budget, you know, we can't present that. But the warrant report, do you feel comfortable having Rich do that and the treasurer's report?
Sure.
Warrant, no?
Yeah.
Okay. Transactions between 8/824 and 8/824 in an amount of $1,015.87.
Are you on this one?
I'm here first one.
Okay, so the amount is 25.
Where?
Second page. See, this is just the first page, and then the second page is the...
Oh, okay, I get it.
Yeah.
All right, okay, yeah.
Second page?
Second page.
25.
All right, 25,980.63.
Can I get a motion?
What a motion.
Crystal, motion, second. Rich, seconds. Discussion, Sue?
Nothing.
Crystal? I have nothing. Rich? Nothing. Call for the vote. Please loudly say yes.
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 Yes and yes. Okay, motion carries. Four to zero.
All right, next one is between, transaction between 8/22/24 and 8/22/24 in the amount of, that'd be $6,664.91.
Can I get a motion? Crystal, motion, second.
Second.
Rich, seconds. Call, discussion, Sue?
No discussion.
Crystal? I have nothing. Rich, nothing. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Four to zero. And the next item is the treasurer's report. Rich?
I usually read that, but have they looked it over?
Yes.
They don't?
Management left over at the end.
There's no vote on this anyways.
There's no vote. This is just a...
That's 33.
So there's, so everybody's read it, but let's have some discussion if anyone has any questions or comments. Sue?
Nothing.
Crystal? I have only that, we now have, it'll be on the second page of your treasurer's report. Our fee accountant is including our estimated reserves as of date. This was generated for August 31st. And so I just wanted to draw the board's attention to that our reserves. And thank you, Pamela, our reserves are up to 68%. They're about. It's not exact because of bill paying, but our reserves are already to 68%. And we're at $149,731 in reserves. And this is a planned thing to make it so we can do our next capital improvement project because they always go over. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it, and things are covered under capital improvement.
Yeah, well, of course, but this is for any overrides, et cetera, et cetera. So we are in great shape. And, and I had a question, if you'll notice on, also on page two, about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines down, interest on investments unrestricted. I had a question, Pamela, the actual year-to-date amount, $2,419.29, that's the interest so far this fiscal year, correct? So it'll be about one year?
Yes.
So we've made that in interest. Do you have any idea what our interest rate is? Because we've got two investment accounts.
Well, it is MMDT. Is it, I'm not sure if you got to talk to her at conference too.
Yeah.
I think she was saying that we're, we've been doing between 4% and 6%.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, it's, it's gonna go down, by the way, but...
And that's a municipal...
Yeah.
Deposit.
And we have a savings account at Greenfield Savings.
Which is nothing.
It's nothing. It's very small. We made two bucks on it this past month. But the investment account at MMDT is, looks like it's doing pretty well.
Yeah.
So I wanted to draw your attention to that because that's very good news. That's all I had. Rich, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
The last page of the treasurer's report is the modernization report, so to speak. Is there anything you wanna tell us from that?
We do have design, we do have the designers that have been, I can talk about it more when we get to the vacancy.
Yeah, yeah.
But no, other than that, they're just moving slow.
We're, we're in process, but it's like molasses in January, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda, this also does not require a vote, is the unit vacancy report. Do you wanna do that, or?
Yeah.
Sue, would you like, or you can do it?
I'll do it.
Okay. Done, ma'am. Go ahead.
667 Golden Court Apartments. Total vacancy is five. 705 Berks Way Children's Unit. The occupancy rate, I mean, the vacant rate is two. Total of seven apartments that are unoccupied at the moment.
And Pamela, you wanna flesh that out a little bit?
So we, of those, so the Berks Way, both of those units are long-term capital projects, so they're really offline, and that's due to the projects through EOHLC. And then of the Golden Court Apartments, there are, there's two brand-new ones due unfortunately to passing of our residents, so that went up. And then the, there's three of them that are remaining that are offline due to EOHLC capital projects. So, and those ones have been assigned, all of them have been assigned designers, which is a form of an architect.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, they'll be moving quickly. We have once again told them that the two units here at Golden Court that are getting ADA improvements are really a priority.
They are.
Because they're, we have people for them.
So they have nobody right now? Nobody can go in them right now?
They can't go in them, but we have people circling, waiting.
So basically, that would be just two, because the other three are offline, the family is offline, so two are the ones that are going to be redesigned, and we have someone for those?
We do have, two of them are gonna be redesigned ADA, and then there's a third one and, of a 667 that is also getting an upgrade too. And then the two at Berks Way. So five total. Five of the seven...
Are offline.
Are offline because of, and have been because of EOHLC.
So the two, excuse me, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The two and family, did that number go down, or it stayed the same?
It's been staying the same, yeah.
So we've got two at Golden Court that, because we've lost two residents.
Right, yeah.
They'll just be cleaned up and...
Yeah, I don't dare add anything else to the vacancy unit initiative because it's just taking too long.
It's taken too long. So we'll just have to turn those over, and then they can be...
Using our, our funds.
Yeah, using our funds. Yeah, okay. Next would be tenants' account receivable. Do you wanna do that, Pamela, or?
So we are making some strides there. The, the top part is the TAR balances. So we do have a good number of folks in the 667 that owe money. The 705 is two folks. I'm not sure why there's no late fees there for them. And then the repayment agreements, we do, there's 669441 in repayments, repayment agreements.
Wonderful.
But it's still, there's a lot of money outstanding.
It really is.
Really is. But you and your staff do everything you can, I know you do, from all the reports we've been getting, to encourage tenants to, to enter into payment agreements. If they have a rough couple of months, they can enter into payment agreements, keeps them out of Housing Court. But if you have to, you do take them to Housing Court, because sometimes that's the only way to get people to pay what they owe.
Right.
Can I ask a question, Pamela? So with the option to go into repayment, do they utilize that, or do they just let their arrears build up?
It's some, most of the time, what, it's the first tier when you go into Housing Court, every single time, the first time you go into Housing Court, there is a mediated meeting where you, you try to get into that repayment agreement. So there is one of the repayment agreements that we actually have that is through a mediated agreement.
Okay.
But because, in Housing Court, but because the tenant is compromised, they just don't agree. So it's still, they...
It's back and forth now.
Yeah, so it's, that, that's our goal, is to get them into the repayment agreement.
Yeah.
And also, when we go to court, we're able to go for a longer period of time.
Okay.
So, but we would love to not go to court with people.
And that's, that's what I see, as we say, I see you working so hard behind closed doors to not have to go through the process of evicting someone because you do understand, you know, housing is limited, and you try to help everyone, but sometimes you do have to go a different route, and it's, a lot of times, it's heartbreaking, but it is a job you have to fulfill.
However, Housing Court doesn't necessar, I mean, they work hard too, trying to get people to understand, and then I think there's the rare instance where Housing Court can't even convince someone to pay.
Right, right. And Pamela does her job to represent...
Yeah.
The Housing Authority in, in a positive way.
It's a positive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so now we are down to E Capital Improvement Report. Do we really have one today, or?
So the only thing we have is, so this is a capital, for admin fees?
No, no, we're on E Capital Improvement Report.
Isn't that part of it? Well, I guess it's underneath it, but...
It's underneath it, but, you know, it kinda trips us up every board meeting because we could probably eliminate that and only add it when there's a definite capital improvement report.
Right.
Do you wanna go down to the admin fee project?
Yep, so this is for, this is for admin fees to be paid back to the Housing Authority, to, to the Amherst Housing Authority. So Hadley would apply for the, the fees through the Project 117097. That was for Access Ramp. And each project, there is a budgeted line item that allows you to have 10%. So it's $547, and then that would be paid back to the Amherst Housing Authority, and that helps us to have a director of facilities.
Well, what it really does is, Amherst Housing Authority is doing all this extra work to administer this contract, and that has to be paid. That's what the state requires. So, so that is a votable item, so I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the admin report here of $547.
And that's for project number?
Project number...
117.
Here we go.
Could these, when these are...
Hold on, please. Go ahead. That's it. On date?
Nine, on date 9/2024.
Can I get a second?
A second.
And Crystal, seconds. Rich's motion. Now I will open it up for discussion. Sue?
Yes, I would like to see, when this happens, to write the project name. You're saying now is for ramps, handicap ramps. It doesn't mention that. So when I was reading the packet over at home, could it at least mention the project and not just the number of the project?
Yep.
And I also wanted to know also about, because of the fact that this 10% to Amherst Housing or any housing authority that's managing a project, because there's a PRN on it, what percentage of housing authorities are actually utilizing or taking this money?
I have no idea what other housing authorities. I have always taken...
Because you're, you know, you're in communication with a lot of these houses. You know, I'm just curious because the fact that you said it existed before, but now you're just recently taking advantage of it, and taking advantage of it in the sense that you're utilizing it. It's coming. You use the last money for, in other words, for a down payment only van.
Right, so we have, I have a personal philosophy that I never leave money on the table, so from the time I've been hired by DHCD or, hired by them, hired by you folks, I have always taken admin money, always. It's money that is in the capital project for the housing authorities, and then in Beltertown, we used it for other projects.
I just don't remember hearing it until recently.
But I explained the last time that it's new that we have to have it, it will be for the board. Amherst has always used their admin money to fund the position of the, either a modernization coordinator, which was Chad Howard years ago, or, and now the director of facilities.
I think what keeps tripping us up here, Sue, is this was always a thing for how every housing authority, not just managing agent housing authorities. And the administration fee was 10% that, that had to appear in your budget to, in essence, pay you back for administering the contract that DHCD or EOHLC required you to do, various upgrades, ramps, ADAs, all that kind of thing. The only thing different now, and Pamela has explained this for meeting after meeting after meeting...
And I understand that.
Hold on. Then, the only thing different that's been required is that the board has to, you know, vote to allow EOHLC to give us the money that we then give to Amherst Housing Authority. Do I have that essentially accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So you keep bringing this back, you brought it back for three meetings in a row in the spring, in the spring and into the summer, but it's the same answer every time.
Right. I understand that. I just would like to maybe call Ben Stone or somebody in EOHLC to, just to have more of a clarification about this.
There's the public housing notices, the public housing notice came out in...
I'm a believer in sharing, in other words.
But nobody...
Sharing money. So if the project is here, I still don't believe that Amherst, because even though you're our managing agent, should take the whole amount.
But, so that's, I'm not always good with analogies, but I think this is similar. So that would be, Omasta is our landscaper, so that would be akin to you having Omasta come and do the leaves, and then say, yeah, we're not gonna pay you for the extra work, just do it because we have a contract with you. So you're asking us to do extra work, but you're not willing to pay us for the extra work.
So the...
That actually hit. I'm not always...
Our managing agent housing authority is the one who did the work of administering the contract.
I understand that.
And we have to pay them for administering this contract. That's what's required by EOHLC. You think, if I'm to understand correctly, that you think Hadley Housing Authority should get part of that money, but Hadley Housing Authority didn't do any work?
Well, if a project comes in, money comes in for Hadley Housing Authority, like the window project, and there's 19,000 some amount of money left over, I feel that a certain amount of it should go into the Hadley Housing Authority, money, you know, into the bank and some of it should go into Amherst. That it should be shared equally, because it was our money coming from our project. What's left, left over, I don't think, it doesn't sound or feel right that it all goes to Amherst, because it came to us for our project.
Unfortunately, that's not how it works, but all, but back to that window project.
Right.
If you recall, a good chunk of that management money actually did go right to the residents when we fed you breakfast and lunch and snacks for a full month. So that was a, and I had staff here from morning to night.
No one's saying you didn't do...
No, 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 excuse me, hold on, ma'am.
Right.
We, we paid the staff. We, we paid, we had to reimburse Amherst for the staff to be here, and we used that money to buy the food for the residents for that entire month. So that was shared. That absolutely was shared, but that's just not, that's not how business works.
It just doesn't, it never, no matter how many times you explain it, it doesn't feel right to me.
Hold on. I understand that it doesn't feel right. It's been explained over and over again. You seem to think, you just said it, that there was leftover money. There was no leftover money. That money is a required budget line item on capital improvement projects and smaller projects like the ramp project. It's required.
Well, it's avail, it's available. It's on the budget.
And then we, we have to pay back Amherst for what they spent, and it's 10%.
It still doesn't, and no matter how many times you're explaining it, it's still, I just believe in sharing if there's left, I believe that it's leftover money from a project. That's how it was explained to me, that it was almost $20,000, and I feel that because it was a...
Who explained to you that it was leftover because no one here ever asked?
At a meeting where they talked about the...
There...
It was unutilized money that was left over.
No, it's, nobody ever said that.
That was actually a bad rumor that was going around. In fact, I got a phone call from Community Preservation saying there's leftover money. No, it's somebody that's not understanding in the public that was watching, that was speaking to you as well, that twisted it and said it was leftover. There was no leftover money. It's a budgeted line item. So it's, it is, it's...
I understand what you're saying.
I know, but ma'am, again, this is...
But I just want, Sue...
Wait, how many people are utili, I mean, who managing, how many people are actually taking it? Why would you leave it on the table? Why would you leave, why would you leave, let EOHLC keep it?
I think, why would they keep it? Why couldn't it just go into the Hadley Housing Authority?
And then what do you want me to do with, just, you want me to just take taxpayers' money?
No.
And then just kinda put it, put it away that we can do...
Because it was our project for our housing, not Amherst Housing Authority.
But you didn't do anything for it.
We have no employees. But the things that you did do for it aren't necessarily things that the tenants or people wanted, it was, it was chosen, in other words.
What was chosen?
Like providing food. It wasn't like ass.
So, is it, I mean, I don't wanna, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. So we provided services and the residents used it during a window project that is absolutely gorgeous.
It is.
And now you're telling me you didn't choose that.
No, we didn't choose having our gardens ripped up.
Please...
Right, okay. That's just, okay, I'm gonna stop this discussion.
Yes.
I will summarize it. After all these explanations over and over again, you still do not understand, you're getting your...
I understand. I don't agree.
I have the floor. You're getting, clearly getting your information from someone else who doesn't know the rules, the laws, and the regs. Pamela has explained this to you. I've explained this to you time and time again.
And I'm not going to-
And we're done.
I still don't agree, right.
And we are done. So Pamela, we are trying to get this admin fee for project 117097. We got off track in the discussion session. I'm going to go to Crystal. Do you have any discussion about the admin fee for project 117? I have nothing. Rich has nothing. I will call for the vote. Crystal?
I vote yes.
Yes? And Rich, yes? Sue? And Sue votes no. It is three to one. Sue Oppenheimer says nay.
And then I just added down at the bottom under the comments that we're requesting the fee and that you're authorizing Amherst to have it. Could you sign that?
I would be happy to. Do you have a black pen or something? All I have is a red pen with me today.
Thank you.
I made it really big so there's no confusion. Okay, now we're down to the, the EF work order, G, work order report. Crystal, would you like to do the work order report?
Okay. I hope I was giving the work order.
Yeah, it's toward the very end of the, of the original, okay.
Maybe I shouldn't, I can't see.
Okay. Go ahead Pamela, with us through this one.
So it's the work orders between August and, August 1st and the 31st. There's really nothing out of the ordinary. You will be seeing more and more inspection work orders as come up, as we have McRight and Associates doing more and more of our inspections too. But nothing out of the ordinary unless anybody has any questions.
I do have a, just, are we done with the bug and the mice problem that was having a problem for us last year? Because I didn't see any, any pest control, so what a relief, I gotta tell you. Okay, does anybody have any questions about the work orders? Sue?
No.
Crystal?
No.
I have nothing, Rich?
No.
Then let's move, please, right along to the annual operating budget. And this is Pamela, for sure.
Okay. Should have had Mr. Pace here. I may have him show up next month. So we have the one operating, the development 400-1, which is a combination of our 667 elderly disabled housing and our 705 family housing. So it's all pretty standard. Basically, what we do is we get the approved increase and we apply it across all of the budgeted line items that we've used in the past. Every year, we're trying to build in more and more money into maintenance and labor and contract costs so that we can do more and more improvements within our own budget as well as that capital plan. You know, there's no employees in Hadley, so there's no employee costs. There's no purchasing of equipment. Right now, we're in the process of purchasing a new F-350 pickup truck for the Amherst Housing Authority. And then our thought process is to get the Hadley truck and the Belcher Town truck to one of the trade schools to try to see if they can shore up the bodies a little, because there's a lot of rust happening. But they're low mileage. They're in really good shape. So those will be out of commission for a while. We did just put in, what was it, tires? There was a good, you'll see the bill next month for, did it come through this month? We're billing back. There was a cost onto the truck that, when I saw it, I said, no, Amherst should be paying that, because Amherst used the truck a lot more than Hadley did. So Amherst paid to have that truck improved.
Excuse me, Pam, this vehicle that you're purchasing, didn't you just purchase new vehicle for Amherst?
We did, but all of our vehicles from Amherst to Belcher Town to Hadley are all in, they're really rusting out. They're very old. The Belcher Town truck, I believe, is now 12 years old. It's got really low miles. It's got like 35,000 miles on it, but the rust on it-
New angling weather.
Yeah, it's just, so we are, we're trying to replace every year.
Yes, I understand. It's nice that you're taking the other vehicles to have them upgraded. But again, the second vehicle will be, will be under Amherst Housing Authority. Your second new vehicle, not Belcher Town and not Hadley.
So when I've talked to our fee accountant, there's no way to really buy a vehicle for Belcher Town or Hadley when you have no employees. So the thought process is that we'll get them in really good shape. And then either we'll, we won't need to replace as soon as possible, or we would turn around and sell the vehicle for you. And then that money would most certainly go right into the Hadley budget.
But if someday we split apart from Amherst Housing, Amherst Housing will have two new vehicles and Hadley Housing and Belcher Town will have all the vehicles. Again, Amherst Housing being the person that benefits the most.
Actually, that whole period of time that you just described, that Hadley wouldn't have a vehicle, we could be saving money to buy a brand new vehicle, so.
And you are.
And we are.
But somehow the money that's going to go into a new vehicle for Amherst after they just got a new vehicle, could be.
So I would like to point out, it's Amherst money. It's our budget. We have a completely different budget, and I budgeted in Amherst for a new truck. It has nothing to do with Hadley at all. It's 100% Amherst money.
I think what Sue, I believe, is trying to say, is there any way that we can finally have a kitty or a budget for Hadley so that we can get our own vehicles?
You do have a budget. You have, your budget reserves. So until we put a line item in for a truck, which is what we're doing in Belcher, or in Amherst, is we say, okay, we have this much money, and when we're doing the budget, we go, okay, I've got $60,000. And then I add a line item for the truck.
And you're saying the reason why we can't do it is because we do not have employees on the Hadley Housing Authority that would need a vehicle?
It doesn't really, it doesn't make sense to take your budget reserves and buy a new vehicle.
That no one can use.
If you want me to buy a new vehicle, we can go back to the drawing board and move some money from your reserves in some other areas and buy a truck. But then your truck is-
Sitting there.
Well, we're using, we do use the truck.
They use it more than we. They use our truck every day. They come and take it.
Right, but she's saying if we wanted a truck for Hadley, then she can rearrange the budget, start over. But that would not be applicable because we wouldn't need it.
And we, I'm not saying we do need it. All I'm saying is, again, I feel the, that everything's going to Amherst. Yes, Amherst is the person that's managing the other housing authority. But we, as Hadley and Belcher Town, have to protect ourselves. No one's saying this management agreement is going to go on forever.
No, I actually think we're moving towards regionalization.
Yeah, but until then, is what I'm saying, we vote on this. In other words, three-year management agreement, five-year management. After that, then it's up to us to decide if we're going to, as a board, to continue or not. So each time that Amherst gains more things, like a truck and a new van, it's less, it's less, more things that Hadley, if we break apart, has to deal with.
No.
That's why I believe, yes. But we have to go to our budget.
But that's what Amherst is doing. They're using their budget to buy the vehicle.
But they just bought a new vehicle.
But so what?
There's funds too.
That, that sounds very like-
That's a second new vehicle.
But it doesn't matter. That's Amherst. They have lots of units.
No, I just believe in, I'm just doing this fairness thing. I believe in sharing, and I don't think that this is happening. But we are sharing. Where Amherst Housing Authority is sharing and we're taking on a management agreement, and we do not make anywhere near enough money to cover what we're actually doing. So I'm sharing with you, and I've been sharing with you now for five years, and it's still not good enough, Sue. So on the, at the other side, your budget reserves are increasing to 68%, 68%. In my 400 program in Amherst, my budget, I had to take money out of a different program and add it in there so that we would get 40%. So you, you have more money than Amherst does in the same programs. Because we're, we're giving, we're constantly giving and working to do the best that we can. We used Amherst money 100% to fund a new vehicle. It's not a slight on Hadley. If you want me to buy a new vehicle, I'll be happy to spend money. I love spending money. Authorize it and I'll go buy a new truck.
No, I didn't say we need it. I'm just saying I believe in sharing.
I just believe that if you didn't just buy one and then you hear you're buying another one, it's to me-
It's actually, I don't mean to be rude, but it's none of your business what equipment the Amherst Housing Authority buys. It's really not. It's not the perm of this board.
And it's not your business, or my business, or any board member's business, who Amherst Housing Authority hires or who resigns or-
When they're second, when they're a director of the housing authority.
It's none of your business.
We've got five directors.
Yeah, but-
We are going, I'm putting, Crystal, you go ahead.
I think we should move on. We've been on this topic. It's, it's been, it has been explained consecutively. And we need to move on.
Okay, so Pamela, would you please go ahead with the rest of the annual operating budget?
Yep, so really what we did with, with the extra funding that DHCD is providing in the budget, the budget this year, is we really put it into maintenance costs and maintenance contract costs. And again, that's going to have a direct effect with the residents and the unit and the facility to keep improving what, each of the units more and more.
I think we've seen that. We sure have seen that.
Yeah, so we do, we have that. And then, let's see, go through. The legal services, there's a line item of $3,500. That's on page three of eight. And if I can just explain that, we do use the regional, the regional attorney, excuse me, the regional attorney program through EOHLC. Based, they allot money based on the number of units that you have. So we're allowed to budget $3,500. So it comes into our budget. It's a line item in our budget, but then they pay, they pay us for that as we use it. If we don't use the $3,500, which we do, we always go over, then we would get less.
Do they ever give you more because you need so much?
So there's talk, there is talk about budget augmentations of them coming in and providing more money to housing authorities to raise their budget reserves. But we're, I'm thinking we're going to hear that within the next couple of months.
Oh, good.
Yeah, there's something coming up that will allow that.
And this will be accountable for all the housing authorities?
That's what they're saying.
And each one. That's good. So that means Hadley would see it improve as well.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Your line item with the schedule of positions and salaries, what is it, family factor? Oh, the family factor, I know that. That's on page four of eight. So again, you don't have any staff, so that's not there. But because the management agreement fee is based directly on the salary of what the ED would be if you had an ED. So we do have to go through the, this is part of the budget, the budget submission. So this is the executive director salary calculation worksheet. So this is a stock form from EOHLC, and it brings in the number of programs that you have. A family factor is when you have, you get a little bit extra money for managing anything with a, with family housing. And it will, and it's prorated in Hadley based, because it's not a full-time housing authority. So Gary has filled this all out.
In this section.
I think you all, you all do have this. And Risa, you will, the vote board will need to vote this and then sign it as well.
Okay.
So at, right now, the, if you hired a part-time director, it would be for 16 hours. I'm actually not sure if you'd get the 16 hours, but, so the salary is 3,900 and-
Oh, no, 39,000.
I'm sorry, yeah, 39,364.
Yeah. And that's a little bit up from what it was two years ago.
Oh, yes, there's been, there has been-
There's been an increase, yeah.
What are the hours for this salary?
16.
16 per week?
Yeah.
Pam, I have a question. Are they keeping it at 16 hours and not 20 because of the fact they don't want to give benefits? Because we had 20 all the years, for many years, we had somebody here 20 hours. And then somebody came and it became 16. There was a point that it was 20 and went down to 16. They dropped the four hours.
It was not because of they didn't want to give benefits. It was because DHCD recalculated the per-unit allotment for hours.
Is that correct? Yeah, and saying that it's at 16 now, I think it, I think it would even drop more. Is that accurate? Nowhere near accurate.
So they're almost forcing people to join together and almost forcing people to regionalize. Nobody can run a housing authority on 16 hours in the office, and we already know that. So because they're doing that, they're almost forcing people to join together.
So I'm going to absolutely agree with you. They're not almost, they really are. That's the intention. That's the intention, is to make us all join together. It does benefit us to be together. You can't, no one would be in this office for 16 hours. If you had somebody here on your own, they're probably putting in 20, 25 hours a week.
A more probably.
Yeah, I mean, for full-time, they're saying 37 and a half hours. I work nowhere near 37 and a half hours. I'm putting in between 50, 60 hours a week.
And we would never get capital improvement projects done if we had a 16-hour-a-week person. Just can't happen.
But getting back to one more thing, I want to say is there's so few housing authorities that have joined together. So there are a lot of people that are working with 16 hours and unfortunately can't do it in that a lot of the amount of time.
There's more and more housing authorities.
Yeah, they're doing management agreements, regionalization, and also contracting mutual aid. Lots of mutual aid, Pamela, is that correct? That's what I heard at the conference.
Mutual aid from who, from what?
From various other housing authorities. They're doing mutual aid, share and maintenance, contractually, all that kind of stuff. Okay, Pamela?
Because I think we're missing the form about how much the housing, how much the management agreement is in the new budget. I don't know if it's a form now or-
Well, the, the last page of this packet is the board-approved salary.
Right, that's the board-approved salary, but then there's the other, the other one that is, because it's 1.5 per, pardon?
It's right after the board-approved salary page.
Oh, I don't have that page.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, you do. It's on, it's at the end of this one.
Oh, it is on the end of this one.
Yeah, it's at the end of, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the end of the full packet. Right, so then the management calculate, which again, this is a standard fee or a standard form in calculation. So the, you get the 39,364 from this form about what you would pay the, for the ED. And then you multiply it by 1.25%, which is $49,205, which would be the management fee. So step three is what share I get, which is really based on what Amherst chooses to give me, because they pay me. But the most I can get is 20%. At this time, if it-
So your salary increases only by $9,841, which I find egregious.
Well, there, yes, there are other people that work too, but yes, that's what I get paid a year by you guys, so. Through, with your money. So we would need a vote for, what, if we can stay on this apart before we go to the full, the full-
Yeah. But yeah, let's get this signed and get it done.
So you would have to authorize the, the new ED salary, which is this 39,364. And where is that again? That's on this separate form.
It's going to this one.
Right.
And it's the page before the last.
So we need a motion?
Please.
I'll move that we, uh, authorized the amount of 39,364, correct?
It's not in here.
Yeah, it is, it is, keep going, keep, wait, 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 wait.
There you go.
Okay. Hold on, let's, we gotta get the page out. Thank you. Yeah, here we go. There you go. Oh, wait a minute, that's not even the right one. There you go. Okay. Uh, so I move that we authorize the management fee of 39,364 according to the management fee calculation worksheet. Does, what, the negotiated management fee 49,205? Isn't that what we should be moving on?
You have to, well, because you have to sign this form first saying that you acknowledge that you, that you approve it and that you.
And then we, we sign the upgrade.
Yes.
Is this percentage the same as last year? Is this, since we've been managed by Amherst, is this a continuum?
No, it, it changes. So last year, the management, um, the ED salary, so.
Not the amount of salary, but the, how, how they calculate the salary. Is it done the last five years in the same percentage?
It's been done like this since I was hired at EO HLC. So it's the same. But the percentage changes every year with the budget guidelines. So this past year, which my, thank you for coming.
Bye.
This past year, there was a 7% increase for, uh, up to 7% for administrative employees. But for executive directors, it was about 1.75%. So the management fee only increased the 1.75%. Uh, and then this year.
1.75% since last year, you're saying, it increased?
Well, that's, last year it was 1.75.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'll have to get you a diff, um, what it increased this year. Because it's the new budget guidelines, it may have, it may be like 4%, but I, I'll, I can get you that figure and email it out to the.
And is this what you consider what they call a cost of living raise or no, nothing to do with cost of living?
We, I tend not to call it a COLA, a cost of living or, uh, or even a merit. Uh, we, well, we tend to do more of a merit increase at Amherst. But, you know, it's based on performance and things of that, but it is within the budget guidelines. It's definitely not a cost of, I mean, again, I got, I got 1.75%. I'm very happy with my salary. I'm not complaining about my salary. I think I'm very well compensated. Um, but for, what ends up happening is the management fee didn't go up by 1.75%.
Yeah, yeah.
So that does impact the Amherst Housing Authority.
So let's get a move on with this. Um, am I stating the motion as it should be made?
Yes.
So I've stated the motion and do I have a second?
A second.
Crystal, seconds. We've already had discussion, but is there any further discussion? Sue.
Um, no further discussion.
Crystal, I have nothing.
Nothing.
Rich, nothing, then call for the vote. We have four to zero.
Could you sign that?
Yes, ma'am. Do I need to fill in these amounts here? Okay.
So on your budget, on the very first page, the, the account number all the way down is, um, just under expenses, the 4190 administrative other. You'll see what we budgeted is 82,955. And that's because the management fee allows us to bill extra for some of our people that come over. So there's that. And then maintenance goes under the maintenance line item. Okay, and then you need to approve the, the management fee calculation worksheet.
Uh-oh, I ended up with somebody else's.
Could you give me the side of something?
Here. Yep. I just handed you the, I think.
As far as merit raises go, is this a written letter from somebody evaluating you when you say merit raise?
That's, um.
Well, I know what the word means, but what I'm saying is who, who is writing this letter that's saying that a person can go up to a certain amount?
That's day-to-day operations with your staff.
Well, so the, the budget guidelines tell us how much we, the, the very most that we can give. And then as the executive director, I do evaluations and then give folks their raises within the budget guidelines. I have to stick within the budget guidelines.
Right, but as far as yourself goes, as, or not you or, or an executive director?
It, well, it goes by this. You can't, you can't pay me any more than this.
I understand that, right.
Um, but then the, the Amherst Board takes care of that. And in the past, they have talked to Hadley and then they've talked about them now as well.
But is it a written performance letter or is it a verbal, is it verbalized?
It's done within a board vote, a board meeting and a board vote.
A board meeting vote.
Yeah.
Cause I have it, Amherst Housing.
Right, right. Risa, I don't know where I did it, but that's what you signed.
Is this it? Okay, what I signed looks like this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm not.
Did I hand you? No, I've got my blank copy.
I think you just signed another one for the.
Oh, find another one, whatever.
Sorry.
Okay, I need, yeah, your blank.
Thank you, this is. Try to keep a folder of what signs so that we can.
My chairs, by the way, my chair's missing, the one I had in here. That beautiful chair you sit on.
I don't know if it's in the office or not, but I have an update on furniture too.
Please, don't let that chair just, you know, it was too big for my apartment, a brand-new Amherst chair, so I brought it here.
You need the.
But there's cameras everywhere, so whoever took it.
Okay, people, let's, let's keep it down so we can get on with this.
Maybe. So, uh, the management fee calculation worksheet.
Yeah.
So you're gonna approve that hopefully?
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
This chair's making noise too.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the management calculation sheet?
Can you save the di, the dollar?
If I could find the management calculation sheet.
And the amount.
Now, this is a, uh, the management calculation. You ready? Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the management fee calculation worksheet in the amount of. Correct?
Yes.
49,205. Can I get a second?
Do a second.
Discussion, Sue.
You can just sign that. Oh, let's see.
I didn't look at it enough to come up with anything to discuss. Do you want this one? We just saw for the first time a few minutes ago. It's too far to really look at and discuss.
Yeah, it's the numbers that we already discussed and already approved, but this is specific to.
Broken down.
This is specific to approving the management calculation worksheet.
Sure.
Um, can I get a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, Rich, Rich already seconded and now I will call for the vote. Sue?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Risa's yes and Rich is yes. There you go, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, and then we'll just go back to the budget if you don't mind.
Please.
So we understand the administrative other and then we're, um, the legal fees. We get those.
I think we got cross-dialed here.
There is a schedule of our insurance and employee benefits. We do still pay, uh, or, or we're fully vested, I guess, in our retirement funds.
Mm-hmm.
For previous ones. Now I'm on five of eight.
Five of eight, there.
Insurance costs continue to go up, both property insurance and workers' comp insurance. Um, we do now have a $9,000 deductible. So I have, um, put out a question to EO HLC to see if I can put in our capital plan some money for insurance claims. Cause not only to pay the deductible, but also to pay for the resident to be relocated. Because the only, the only way they're relocating a resident is if there's a fire. Which is kind of ridiculous because if you, if you have a flood, you need to go somewhere too. So I'm, I'm hoping to get that into a, a capital plan.
I am missing the entire.
We did through the budget.
And all budget.
So on page six of eight.
Six of eight, okay.
So it's a schedule of non-routine expenditures. Do you need one?
Yeah.
Thanks. That's this page here. We put in, uh, $15,000 for unit rehab. So that's, that'll be outside of capital money and outside of an EO HLC or a, a Rcap project. So $15,000 so that we can do projects here. So if you look at, um, page seven of eight, the current calculation of the reserve is showing 37%. And that's if we spend all our money at the end of the year, which doesn't look like we're spending at all. Um, so I, I hate to say it on camera, but I'm gonna say it on camera. It's kind, it's almost a good thing that we're below the 50% in this instance. Because if, when they do the budget augmentation, when they give out that extra money, we might get a little more.
That's great, yeah.
Spend it before the end of the year, yeah?
Um, this last page shows you where we have, uh, conferences and, and travel and things budgeted. We do, our commissioners tend to like to go to conference, so that's a good thing we have those, um, budgeted. We also have an additional $7,500 for legal expenses budgeted.
Because we tend to use it, right? History has shown, yeah.
Yeah. So there's those type of things. So that's pretty much the budget in a nutshell, if anybody.
So this is a.
Has questions.
This is a voteable item and, uh, it's been presented. Uh, so I'll take a motion to approve the annual operating budget for tw, uh, fiscal year ending 9/30/2025. If you read that. Oh, they tell me what to say. I read this? Okay.
Yep.
So I move that the proposed operating budget for stay-dated housing of the Hadley Housing Authority. Do I have to read the parent?
Just put, uh, you'll only the 400.
Uh, chapter 400 dash one for fiscal year ending 9/30/2025 showing total revenue of 430, uh, 453,540 and total expenses of 465,511. Thereby requesting a subsidy of 168,840. And further that the executive director's total annual salary of $0 for fiscal year ending 9/30/2025 be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. And this does have to be roll call, so can I get a second?
Second.
Crystal Jackson, seconds. Um, we've already had quite the discussion, but I'll go around one more time. Sue, do you have any?
Yes, why does it say zero amount and not the amount filled in?
Cause you don't pay, um, it doesn't come out of your budget for the ED salary. You, you have no employee, so you have no employee cost.
So that's referring to Hadley, that's why it's set wrong.
And, right. This is our budget, not Amherst's budget.
Right.
So do you have any further questions?
Just a comment and the fact that this is such an important thing, I really think that we should have had it to look at. Being given it today and voting on this today, to me, doesn't feel right. And I'm just stating that for, I don't feel good about it. I think we need more time to.
It can't be done till the end of, of September and our fiscal year starts on October 1st.
But still, you don't give somebody a, something like this that important on the same day as an meeting.
If you, if. If you want to table it, uh, I won't vote to table it, I want to get it done. Uh, so are you finished with your comments?
I'm finishing my comments. Can I make a comment back to you? Just, just to reassure you though, too, it, it is very much, but there's a thick book on, uh, the public housing notice page too. It's the budget guidelines. It all has to follow the budget guidelines, everything has to add up correctly. You, so our fee accountant prepared it with, I told him what I was looking for as far as, you know, any of the little extras. Um, but he does this, um, he does them for 26 other housing authorities too. And then it still has to go to EO HLC and IO, I can't say IO's last name, who is in charge of finance. They have to go through it too with a fine-tooth comb and approve it. So there's, there's a three-step process here, um, that, to make sure that it's, it's accurate.
Thank you Pamela.
And within guidelines.
Right. Thank you Pamela. Crystal, do you have any?
So this amount here. 168 is the difference between a 453 and a 465?
The 168 is the subsidy. That's actually, I'm sorry, that was a very good question, I've neglected that. That's the subsidy that DH, EO HLC is going to send us.
Oh, good.
Right, so we, so our budget is the $400,000, but then DEO HLC is sending us that 168.
Which brings it up to the 465.
Oh, right, right.
Okay, I have no questions, Rich?
No, sir.
All right, I'll call for the vote. This has to be roll call vote. Sue?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Risa is yes?
Rich, yes.
Rich is yes.
So on the last page, you, you all do have to sign. So you all have to sign.
What page would, on this packet, would we write the total amount? What page?
The total amount of what?
Of what you just, uh, what she added.
So if you look down.
What she added, the subsidy, where, what page would, would the total amount be on?
It's on, it's on this page, which you should have in the packet.
So the expenses, Sue, is on the very top front page, all the way down to the bottom, after the two bolded lines.
Right.
It's the total expenses, it's the 4,000. It says total expenses, 465,511.
And then we're adding the subsidy to it, which is what I'm saying.
And the subsidy is up and I gave, it, so I gave the wrong amount. It's at the top.
Right.
It's under 3801 and it's 168,840.
801. So we're adding that amount to the.
That's right.
465,500. To the 453,540.
Okay.
And it's going to then be the 465,511.
Okay.
So Rich. So we just print and then sign and date.
Right, so at that top there too, while you're waiting for the signature to come, you'll see that the, the estimated revenues, because we never know, I mean, people's incomes change, from our tenants is $275,000.
Right.
And then the 168. So our, our tenants are still paying a larger percentage than the subsidy.
That's right, that's good. I don't have. I don't have any readers or a gift.
I wish I.
I know, I keep pulling my glasses off.
I can't believe I didn't, don't have any in my pocket, I'm hoping I didn't lose it. I don't know who's this other, you don't know, maybe it's, but I have mine. I don't know. Did you check the safety handles? Everybody signed? No, I haven't.
Yes.
Perfect.
Was it stapled at one time or a second?
And we are now.
Then I don't have it.
Uh, to, uh, under Executive Director Report, Letter I, the engagement letter with our fee accountant Gary De Pace. Pamela, would you like to present, please?
Yep, so Gary De Pace, who has been the, uh, fee accountant for the Hadley Housing Authority. I believe he told you folks when he came out for a planning, he's been here for 30 years, well before my time. So this is just an engagement re- letter to get us to the end of 26. Um, I do think Gary is go- is nearing more of a retirement phase, uh, he's gearing towards that. But Gary De Pace, C B A P C will still be around, we believe. He's got a new young, um, accountant that's working with him, he's got staff in the office. He'll always be overseeing, um, he is an invaluable help to us, always.
Oh, yeah.
Um, whether it's an accounting question or it's a regulation question. I mean, Gary's been around for so many years, he's just, um, he's just a fixture. Um, so his fee is also in the budget guidelines. What fee accountants can charge is determined by E O H L C and it's based on the number of units. So that's very calculated as well. Um, based on the number of units that we have here in Hadley. His, um, fee for the year would be $7,524, which he would spread out monthly. If you go back to your, or I, hey, I'm sorry, I should've.
It's in there, yeah.
Go back to your budget, that is line item under expenses, about just at the top of the page there. The accounting cost, it's 4170 and he has the 7524 in there. He also has an estimate of $1,500 a year for the modernization. So that's an estimate based on our capital projects that we have in the loop. Um, and that's also, just like the admin fees in a capital project, there's a fee for, because Gary does extra work, making sure the accounting is all done. So he's compensated for that as well. That's 1,500. So, um, all I need from the board is a, a vote to go, uh, to go back into contract with Gary for the, um, balance for, uh, up until, uh, 26.
I move that we, uh, uh, contract with Gary De Pace as our fee accountant in this, uh, engagement letter, uh, through fiscal year 2025.
26.
26.
Till fiscal year 2026.
Yes.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Crystal seconds, discussion, Sue?
Well, you're not, you don't offer us another option. In other words, there's never any discussion about it, so myself as being new to a board, I would automatically wanna vote for somebody who's been doing it for that many years. But we're not being presented other options.
Yeah. And I think. There's not many options. If you go onto the A U P website, um, which is, uh, where we get our auditors for the A U P, most of those auditors are also fee accountants with the ex- I'm sure there's more than the, the exception of Lisa Fallon, who does our audits too, but she doesn't do the day-to-day fee accounting. So it's ki- it is, it's a niche, um, specialty that we're in, so it's, Massachusetts is different than other states, so we don't have people coming from other states. I mean, he was, like, uh, he was pretty lucky to get Michael to come here from Boston to move back home to Eastern Mass to take it over, so.
I would also, as a new member, being on the board, for someone who has 30 years in doing this with us and, and in life, I, I wouldn't even want someone new to, to, right? Because then you have to develop the rapport, you have to trust this person. And from what we've seen with his performance, I believe that he's someone that we can trust and we should keep.
Right. And remember, he's audited too. Because like Lisa Fallon comes along and she audits his work, that every few years, there's an audit. So, uh, he is very consistent, he, uh, has an extremely good reputation. He has caught fraud in housing authorities before and he reports it.
Directly to the board, not to the executive director. He doesn't work for the executive director, he works for the board.
Right.
And so we rarely, rarely see him if he works for the board. I don't know where he is, but.
Well, issues your report.
I always, I always think of Ebenezer Scrooge, sorry Gary, if you're watching, um, just kinda hiding behind a closed door with the, the things on their sleeves.
The numbers, yeah.
Counting numbers.
Counting numbers, like the Wizard of Oz, I must.
Yeah, exactly.
Not at all.
It's the, it's a backlog of.
The Wizard of Oz was a fraud, Gary De Pace is not. He has audited consistently, all of the housing autho- how many?
26 that he has.
26 housing authorities, he's, he's one of very few fee accounts available in this state. And he has done a great job for Hadley, all these years.
So I will say, he, so he does 26 housing authorities as the fee accountant and then I don't even know how many housing authorities that he's a state, he's an auditor, an A U P auditor for them. You're not allowed to audit the housing authorities that, obviously, that you are a fee accountant.
Right.
So he's in a lot of.
That's why he knows so much, he knows auditing and fee accounting.
Well, um, E O H L C also has, um, uh, groups of folks, like they'll, they have a, a working ED group that will, uh, which I would love to be on, that go up and talk to E O H L C on a monthly basis and say, here's what's going on. Um, when they're devising, um, the budget guidelines and coming up with new things, they'll meet with a group of fee accountants. And Gary was always on that too, so he's, he's in the know.
Is he the person that also decides who the auditors are gonna be when you, when a housing authority is auditing?
No, no, that's, so it's, so we've had, um, in Amherst, we've had Markham and Associates. And then here in Belcher Town, we've had, um, I'm sorry, Hadley, in Belcher Town, we've had Lisa Fallon. Lisa doesn't do the federal audits, it's a different caliber of audit. D, D, uh, I'm sorry, E O H L C requires that you change every five years. So this past year, which we should have the guideline, uh, or the audit, um, next month for you, Markham and Associates actually audited, um, Hadley because Lisa had to bow out for this year. So this year you have.
Markham and Associates out of where, out of, with Boston?
I think it's like, it's Needham or it's, it's the eastern part of the state.
Hmm.
Yeah.
They were at the conference, do you remember, seeing Markham, yeah?
Yeah.
So they're a big group.
They did 2024.
Uh, 2023.
Oh, you're talking about, I thought you meant for now, so Lisa was out 2023.
For the 23 audit, which ended.
In 2024.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I meant, sorry.
No, no.
Okay, where are we?
Approve or not approve?
Okay, so can I call for the vote now, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so Sue is yes, Crystal's yes, I'm yes, Rich is yes. Motion carries four to zero. And you sign this.
I'm gonna have you sign it.
You gonna, you have any? Do we have to sign or no?
No. Um, so next, the, next month or, or the beginning of November, Gary will be out with the year end and he'll go over all of, there's a lot of things at that point, um, that he'll be pointing out. And he always uses it as a, as a way to get a tutorial for everybody.
Right.
Um, and, and, um, there'll be a lot of other forms for everybody. Either the October, at the end, the October, um, meeting or November at the latest.
He'll be here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, cool, great.
Yeah.
You get to meet him.
Yay.
Did you meet him at conference?
I, did I meet him?
I don't think you met him, you saw him, you saw him, yeah. She didn't get to meet him.
Tall, gray hair.
He ate lunch with us that one day, or the last day I ate lunch with him. But I don't think you were there or.
No, I didn't eat lunch the last day.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, or not the, it was breakfast, it was breakfast, the last day. Okay, cause I didn't eat lunch the last day either.
Yeah, we couldn't, we left.
Yeah. Okay, so now we're done with the engagement letter, we're to board correspondence. I have no board correspondence to bring up, does anyone else have any correspondence, discussions, conversations with people?
For instance, give us an example of what you're.
Anything related to the board, were you in conversation with anyone that you need to tell the board about?
In relation to the board, no.
In relation to the Hadley Housing Authority, for which you have fiduciary responsibility.
I guess, uh, if, because of the fact that there's no longer director, will, if they do hire another director, will the monies go to another li- a, a person that's doing another position? Cause you said one time in our la- one of our last meetings that you were gonna reorganize your employees. If you decide down the road not to hire another director, you being the executive director, person left being the director, will that monies go to hire other employees with different titles?
I'm gonna interject here Pamela, this is a day-to-day operation thing that this board has no input in, has no questions about.
I don't look at it as day-to-day though, because it is managed by management and that's management.
You're managed by a management agreement. I, I think we need to scoot back from allowing this kinda line because it's day-to-day operations, who you hire.
I don't look at it as day-to-day, I'm sorry.
It is, by regulation, it is. And we have nothing to do with who you hire or move around or whatever.
Well, I'm not asking who she's hiring, I'm just asking.
We shouldn't even know their names.
Will that position disappear, then monies will be left over.
That, there's no money left over.
If like me.
Please.
Are you asking if, is there money left over from the management agreement?
No, in other words, to me, how I.
Salary, I think.
Without her interrupting, to, to me, when we have a manage agreement, you're the executive director, then there's a director. You, of course, the executive director is over the director, but that's, position is no longer being filled by somebody. How, if you decide not to hire a director because you're hiring now support service coordinators and other people that we never had before, the monies that come in from the state that would have covered the director's position, how will that be?
Dissipated.
So.
Distributed.
I think was, yeah, she's, I think what she's saying is, if that position is no longer available, we get $65,000 for that position, what happens with that money?
Right. So it stays in the line item of, of the, without a budget revision on the Amherst end, I can't move it within the lo- within the budget.
Nothing can be done with that money.
Well, that's what I was wondering, so I don't look at that as day-to-day operation, I look at that as management.
Right, but it's Amherst management, cause it's.
But Amherst is managing us, so basically it's all management.
But your services aren't gonna be affected by.
No, not affected, but we're still part and party of the whole.
But not, you're not part of our budget, other than, than the, the fees that you pay us. But, no, it, but as a general question, a line item has to, you have to spend the money within your line item. If there's a change plus or minus 10%, you have to do a budget revision. So at this point, it's, we're still, it's, it's only been two weeks, so.
But it doesn't affect Hadley's budget at all?
No.
It's not even up for our consideration? Um, did you have anything else, Sue?
Nothing else.
Crystal?
No.
I have nothing?
Nothing.
All right, then we're down to future meetings. We're already scheduled for October 29th at 11:00 a.m. And the one after that is November 26th, that's, I believe, two days before Thanksgiving. And then we can maybe, I don't know, we'll.
Maybe move it up a week?
No, uh, we'll check with, uh, excuse me. We'll check with, um, um, Gary De Pace and see if he can come then or whatever works for him.
Is that Thanksgiving week?
It is.
Oh, I'm off.
Yeah, oh, you're off, so that won't work. So, uh, do you wanna do it the Tuesday before?
Thanksgiving is the 28th or is it?
Well, yeah, let's double check.
Because it's two days before Thanksgiving, I just said maybe we could reschedule the meeting for two, the week before.
Yeah.
Cause a lot of us go away for Thanksgiving.
So Thanksgiving is on the 28th, um, and you're gonna be gone that whole week?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna be chained to a stove, I don't know.
Yeah. So how about, how about Tuesday, the 19th?
November 19th?
Sure.
How's it? Let's, let's find out if Pamela can do that, cause she has lots of meetings.
Can't leave the 19th open.
Rich, how are you on the 19th?
Fine by me, yeah.
I have a question, Alex, are we going to have any meetings? We didn't have a date yet for the, did you?
Not, not heard, remember, no, but October yet.
Okay, so I can put down yes. Yeah, cause we'll probably have our meeting in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay. Sue, is Tuesday, November 19th, does that work for you?
Yes, better than.
Okay, so it looks like we're in agreement, uh, Tuesday, November 19th, Pam, 11:00 a.m. And sometimes that happens, we have to get off schedule for various, usually Thanksgiving and Christmas that does that, but. Okay, does, um, uh, Pamela and, uh, Crystal and I went to the Mass Naro Conference. And so I put this under Commissioners Discussion, in case you, anybody wanted to give reflections or said something about what they learned, et cetera. Crystal, do you have anything?
Yes, I learned an extreme amount of information, um, not just pertaining to the housing authority, but to benefit the town of Hadley as well. Um, the information I did learn, uh, regarding the housing authority, speaking with HUD and all of the different Section 8, um, availability and the different housing authorities, it was amazing. That information that was provided is definitely educational. It, it really was something needed and efficient. I, I really enjoyed myself in meeting the people and everyone affiliated. And also to see what the housing authority, what HUD is doing behind the scenes to increase, um, more housing for low income, for disabled, for elderly, and how the housing authorities in the eastern part of Massachusetts and what they're going through as far as the funding and trying to, um, provide and develop on new land. Also with the guidelines and policies and procedures with HUD, it was a lot of information and, and I definitely will go again. I will go again.
I too, I could just second everything you said. It's all.
The food was good.
And the food was good.
And the beach was one key.
The beach was one. Um, the, uh, that's what I've experienced, this was my fifth time going. And every time I go, I'm able to build on what I learned before, which makes it easier to be a board member because you just know so much more.
Yes.
There were many, many offerings for, uh, Board of Commissioner folks who have taken on that role to help us be more effective, do our job, know what the rules, laws and regs are. And I am ever so grateful to all the presenters, uh, because, uh, they, they teach you how to run a meeting, they teach you how to deal with other board members and, um, uh, you know, situations, Robert's Rules of Order, everything. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to go.
Yes.
Because I think it, it really does help us be.
More efficient in our position, definitely.
More effective, more knowledgeable. Um, so I have to say thank you Pamela for putting that down as a line item because it really does help. Makes your life easier too, I think.
It does. And I also want to say, I did get to meet Belcher Town, South Hadley, so many different, uh, workers and EDs for those housing authorities and they're, they're such nice people.
They are.
They're really, really wonderful, you know, and you wouldn't expect that because it's such a serious position.
Yeah.
You know, but they all had great composure and characters. And again, as Reece said, I want to thank you Pamela for doing that because it's definitely needed.
And again, as Reece said, I want to thank you Pamela for doing that, because it's definitely needed and next year we'll definitely build on what I know today.
And I'll just add, the, the one thing that I, I learned after the first time I went was all the executive directors and staff and EO HLC and everybody involved in housing, their number one goal in life is to preserve the housing we have and to make more.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I say with your job, going to the conference, I see now everything you do behind closed doors. It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
There is a lot, thank you. There was, there was a lot again this, this time about the mental health crisis that we're all going through and enduring in both, the staff is having issues, our tenants are having issues, the community in the whole is having issue. So there's, there was a lot of good information about how to deal with that. This time we had well over 35 vendors, which was amazing. Reece has the pen, I'm really thrilled about this woman. Interior Resources, she's coming out at the end of the month and she's going to be looking at our community room and they do really nice commercial furniture that is good-looking and durable and bariatric chairs for maybe some of our larger folks.
Wow.
So she's going to come out and do a design and then we'll have a tenants meeting too, to say, you know, here's, here's what it is, what do you think? So that we can update our
It's been a long time, hasn't it?
Oh, this is, I mean, this, I would imagine this has been here since day one.
62, folks.
But our laundry, our laundry vendor was there. I took a refresher class on procurement, which is always changing and always, there's so many nuances to that. Always something to learn there. But yeah, it was overall very, very good, lots of information. We, we missed you too, hopefully next time.
Yeah, Rich, Rich goes, no, never hit, never went over the bridge.
Rich is like, just let me know how it went.
But, but yeah.
It was really good.
Okay, so the next are items for future agenda. Sue, do you have anything?
I have to think about it. I'll get to you if I think of something.
Okay. Crystal? I have nothing.
Nothing.
Rich? Oh, Maggie left, so she was our
She said meals or wheels.
Yeah, she had to, she had to go. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Then we are adjourned.